Good evening. Today is Monday, 14th September, 2020, and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of USD 453. Start off with a roll call. Mr. Carney?
Here.
Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mrs. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Powell is absent right now, and I'm Mr. Darling, and I'm here. If you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. Dr. Roth, if we could please have the district mission statement?
Yes, it's to prepare every student for success in every classroom, every day.
Thank you. Jake, have we got a nobody for scheduled patron input? In that case, I need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Wells, a second by Mr. Goodman. Any comments?
I did want to make a comment really quick. Going through the gift log, I just wanted to commend the community on just their support and outreach. Over $5,000 being donated in backpacks full of supplies for our students. Then $1,000 for death shields, clear death shields for students, and then 1,600 masks. I mean, it's just tremendous how much the community supports us, and wanted to say thank you.
Okay. So noted. All those in favor adopting the agenda as presented? Six zero. Moving on to item number two, consent agenda.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Wells, a second by Mrs. Price. Any further discussion? Nope. I would second Mrs. Murphy on the generosity of the people in this district. It's really humbling. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, raise a hand. Six zero. Moving on to item number four, consideration of the Easton Bus Service contract for the 2020-2021 school year.
We've been working with Easton Bus. These numbers, as we approve right now, or as you have in front of you, could change, and they would actually go down as opposed to up, as long as we don't add any routes. But the reason it's a little bit where it's at now is because with the alternating schedule and what we have, we're having to run more single routes. Where in the past, we were able to run double routes. Once school becomes more fluid and more regular, they believe they'll be able to combine some of those routes, which then in turn will save us dollars. Right now, we've kept all the routes that the board has approved in the past for safety. And this also includes some additional routes that are going to the new intermediate school, where we have more fifth graders being transported. Next year, you'll probably see something a little bit different, because that's when the new pre-K K center comes on. But also, when you look at what the estimated special education transportation waiting from the state, that will go up too, because you will have more students that live 2.5 miles away from their attendance center. And so this is higher than what it was last year, but they have additional costs, and we are running additional routes based on our schedule, more so just to try to get everybody situated at that time. Is there anything you'd like to add, Beth?
No. We've had a long partnership with Easton Bus.
I got a question.
Yeah.
I had a bus driver call me and ask if it's in the contract, or because I guess last year when we shut everything down, they kept getting paid. Is that gonna happen again if this happens?
There's a provision in the contract that, like last year, with the state continuing payment of the transportation, it was the expectation that we fulfilled our obligations to bus drivers. And so as a district, we paid all of the drivers, as we did our classified staff, our teachers. But we didn't pay for additional fuel, additional cost of maintenance to buses and those types of things. That was maintained and absorbed through Easton. But the cost of the bus drivers would be something that we would continue to do, based on the ability to keep drivers and retain them, as opposed to them going off and then school restarting, and we have no drivers to do that. And so that was the premise behind that. And Jeff, Jeff Kincaid, who owns the Easton Bus Service for us, we have an agreement that it would be something similar if something would happen along these lines, for the exception if we would lose all the transportation waiting, then it would be back to negotiating at that point. But as long as we continue to get funded on the transportation waiting, the right thing to do is to make sure our drivers get paid.
The busing was also increased because of the Lawson students that are now being transported to-
That is correct.
David Brewer and Anthony.
Yes.
Okay, that's correct.
And also their fifth grade class, which is going to the intermediate center. All right, anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Easton Bus contract for the 2020-21 school year.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Mrs. Wells, and a second from Mrs. Murphy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, raise a hand if you're in favor. Six zero in favor. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 5.1, superintendent evaluation process. It's getting to be that time again. And last year, we talked about changing the superintendent's evaluation process. And as you can see here, there's three evaluation instruments. And you know, for Dr. Roth, I say which one would give you the best feedback?
All three of them provide. First of all, Brenda reached out to KSB, which is the Kansas Association of School Boards, who represents the majority of the school boards throughout the state of Kansas. Those were the three that Dr. Jordan sent for you to look at. Each one of those three actually produced similar, or requests similar information. The first one would probably be in the most simple form, and it gives you the largest variety, I guess, of choice to say doing really well or not doing very good. The others are more correspondence, as far as me giving you artifacts and documentation, and you documenting, and the communication back. So if you're looking at, and not necessarily just because it's simple, doesn't mean it's not effective, because you can always have the correspondence and the backup through written form as well, regardless of which one you choose. And so the one thing that I believe that we've all, as a group through time, have developed an open relationship, meaning that if you see something that needs improved, or you have seen something that I personally need to change, or you haven't had any issue with openly communicating that with me, whether it's in an evaluation form or not, which I truly appreciate. But any of those three forms are very doable. Any of those three, but I will tell you, the McCrell one will probably require a lot more board time to complete that than the other two, but I would be open to any of the three. So I know I didn't answer your question, Mr. Darling, but-
That's okay. You're ready to be a politician now, find an elected position, get tap dancing. Any discussions among the board members?
If memory serves me correctly, didn't we use number one-
No, it was-
Or number one, two years ago, or something similar to that?
No, you've used the met-not met the last couple of years. I'd have to go back and look, but you might be right, Ms. Murphy, on the first year that you were elected. It might have been-
Yeah, the first one looked very familiar.
I'd have to go back and look. But the last two years, I know it's been met-not met, and the board at the conclusion of each of those evaluation periods has indicated they really didn't care for that one, and have contemplated changing the format of this process for a while now.
Just in my experience with the last two that we've done, and the one, the first year I was on the board, I really liked the first one, and I do remember the commentary blocks that we could set there and elaborate on whatever we thought. So that's just my two cents on it. I mean, they're all three will function, but I'm real big about keep it simple and to the point as well.
I guess I'm used to the 360 ones that are really a pain in the rump to do, but you at least get some fairly decent feedback on the military side. So I'm not worried about doing that, but it's kind of, you know, I'm only one person on this board. I don't know what the rest of the board wants to do.
I personally liked the performance-based one that KSB provided as the most commonly used by other school districts to evaluate their superintendents, which was the third option.
Okay. Does anybody want to discuss further? Does somebody want to make a motion? No?
I'm not opposed to the first option. It just seemed extremely simplistic, and that I would be able to go and select one through five and not give much thought, because it doesn't require me to give input if I don't want to give input, and the third one required that, and that's why I think that it's better to get- We're elected, we need to do our job, and that would make us do more work than the first option would be.
And I will agree that providing the superintendent constructive, useful feedback is important part of what we do. We have one employee, and that's Dr. Roth.
That's true.
So that's one reason why I wanted his input first, and he very diplomatically tap danced around it. So what do you all? Okay, that was a motion, right?
I will make a motion that I would like to adopt the performance-based superintendent evaluation for the next year's evaluation of Dr. Roth.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And we have five, and Mike, you're a no vote. Okay, we have a five-one. And I think we need to, after we go through it this time period, we should, you know, assess about January-
Probably should have an evaluation of the evaluation.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I think you are correct.
I think there's merits to both of them, honestly.
Yeah. There's merits. Evaluation, if it's done properly, is useful to the person being evaluated.
Right. Unless there's an egregious problem, I really don't have much to say about it, except good job. So, okay.
But we all can use tweaking.
Right.
Yeah. So, all right, we've got a decision there, so we're moving on to item number six, superintendent's report.
First of all, at your desk, these are the updated, on the sheet, the updated numbers for enrollment. If we were to close things off today, I believe our, actually, I believe our official number would be down 174 students. We are still cleaning up the official count day for school districts across the state of Kansas.
Thank you.
It is September 21st. And so September 21st is the official count day for the state of Kansas. So we are still actively reaching out to parents that haven't enrolled or have not enrolled in other districts, or that we don't have a paper trail of that to finalize those numbers. So we're hoping to close a little bit more of that gap prior to the 21st. The sheet I just handed out is the new gating criteria, or not the new, well, it's the new gating criteria information for the week. We had about 5:30, the number come across for today, so that's why you have September 14th as an option. Even though the number of cases that were reported that turned, that were positive, which is one of our highest, I think it was 51, they tested a lot more individuals, so that percentage was actually lower than what it was on the 7th. And so even at the 6.48%, as a community, we're still in yellow, and all the others were trending about the same way. So all three categories, we're still in a yellow.
Although we do expect, two weeks after Labor Day, expect next week to pop up some.
Right. There's a lot of indications, just not so much locally, but across the state, that there definitely could be an increase with videos and pictures that were taken of mass gatherings and events that were going on. One of the things that the board had asked for, and that would be the recommendation of our admin team, and I think timing-wise, the last special meeting, the board talked about hosting another special meeting to specifically talk about gating criteria, and to kind of keep timing, that if there would be any decision, we would be out far enough in front of their next regular school board meeting, that we recommend September 30th. We recommend September 30th at 5:30 PM. And the reason why we would like to move it up 30 minutes is that we would like to have, probably, we figured close to an hour, maybe up to an hour, discussion on anything new regarding the gating criteria and information that we would share from our buildings and building principals to you on that evening, and still leave enough daylight to do a tour of all of the facilities via school vans. So we'd have some school vans here, and would like to show you, take you up and show you on that evening Lawson. Go over and let you look at the middle school and the new entryway at the high school. So by doing it at 5:30, we're hopes that there'd still be enough daylight, so when we'd get into Lawson, some of the natural light would come through and make it a little more appealing to you as a board. There has been a lot of change up there, and I think you will be very impressed with the work that has been done and the pace that they are on to complete that. The high school new entryway, it's our intent to open it next Monday, the eighth. We're waiting on a handrail, as opposed to trying to make a makeshift handrail on some of the new ramps. We believe it will be in, or it will be in and able to be installed by next week. If not, at that point in time, we'll add a temporary one to where we can have that fully open and functional by next Monday. So we'd like to tag the gating board meeting, have that at the beginning for anybody that would want to attend and listen to the discussion before the board, and then follow that with a tour of Lawson, the middle school area, the new collab spaces in the middle school, and then finish at the new high school entryway, and then bring you back to the board at that, the board office at that time. So that's why we selected 5:30. The 30th is two weeks from now, and then I believe it would be two weeks from, before the next regular scheduled board meeting. So that's why the 30th was selected. If there's no objections from the board, we will go ahead and move forward on that. What we will probably, well, not what we will probably do, what we will do is we will order some sandwich platters and have some food as you're able to listen to, or possibly grab as we get in the van and have something, because I know that could interrupt some evening meal opportunities for you as a board.
Dr. Roth, when we're talking about the gating criteria, would it be possible to receive an update as to what we're doing with athletics in regards to COVID, athletics and co-curriculars specifically? Like, there was an update at the middle school today that they've seen attendance low with the 2% being able to maintain, I'm sorry, with the two, each athlete has two tickets, and they're going to increase that to four tickets because they're able to maintain the distance. I'd just like an update at all of it, if possible.
Absolutely, that's a good point. And a lot of this, just as you all know, until we experience it, we don't really know how easy or how difficult it's going to be to keep that social distancing aspect for our families as they come to these events. And outdoor events are actually a little more easier to maintain, because our venues are bigger and the air, I mean, it's a fresh air, open air, as opposed to in our gym areas, and being able to keep people spaced out and that. But absolutely, I think that's a great point. We will try to encompass all of the changes, the expectations that we have. I have met with, prior to tonight's board meeting, we had the entire district admin team, our assistant principals, and all of our lead principals, directors on a Zoom meeting to talk about how the last four days in the new hybrid model tagged on to our opening of the first two weeks. I will tell you, there have been a few hiccups as far as some internet connectivity and identifying, but for the most part, our admin are very pleased with our teaching staff and the work that they've done, as long with our parents. I can't say enough positive things about our community as they're dealing with this from an educational standpoint. These are things that no one has had to do for a consistent basis, I know, in the last 27 years. And so our parents have been very gracious in giving us the ability to change and communicate. We still have to get better. We understand that. We're working on that every day. But overall, our principals, and if you talk to them, and a lot of our teachers, they're very pleased with the conduct of our students, with the effort of our students, and will continue to get better as this process continues to develop. And so, anyway, but that, when we talk about the gating criteria, we'll give you all the good, the bad. We'll do another thought exchange out to our families and our staff to get another, to get idea of how things are going in the field, so you can actually-
And the students as well, because I've gotten several parents and students. There's a lot of kids coming down with migraines now, after being on the computer with homework 10 hours a day.
Yeah.
And it's becoming an issue where they're physically ill, and I just, I feel for them, I really do.
100%, right. This is, for sure, this is not an ideal situation.
No, no, it's not.
Dr. Watson, we had a Zoom meeting as a state today. Some of the things that were talked about that I could share out, one is that, you know, part of us, we were all anticipating the first quarter to semester, you know, from what the experts are telling them from the State Department, this could last all school year. So these are going to be hurdles and things that we have to really adjust to. And we're continually trying to inform the boards, so the board can make decisions based on the best interest of our students and our staff. And so we'll get as much information as we can for that. The other piece to that, I'm sure many of you have probably heard, or maybe even experienced yourselves, the daily log and having to record all the minutes that you're spending with students and that. That has been changed. Now it is basically an assurance package that you, as parents, would sign that says, "I know we're in remote learning, I know," this is just paraphrasing, "I know that there's going to be a time that we have to spend doing remote work." And then the school district, on the flip side of that, will have the assurances that we'll make contact, and we'll provide curriculum, and we'll provide, and each parent will fill that out for a student. That's what we will get audited on. That and our daily attendance that we would take anyway, and the daily contact that we would be making with students in that realm in itself. And so it's going to make that less burdensome as far as keeping track. And I only spent 10 minutes, but the lesson said it was going to be 30. How do I keep track of that? I got to sign off every day. And then the administrative piece to that of always trying to track down and say, "Okay, Mr. Darling, you missed three days here. Did you and your student spend X amount of time on that?" So the state actually made that change today. That was part of the Dr. Watson Zoom meeting as well. And so, again, that's another pivot. That's another change. That wasn't necessarily initiated by the district, but I do believe that it benefits our staff, and I do believe it benefits our parents on the tracking of that. So that was a much appreciated change or pivot for this time.
Well, it gives some leeway within the Zoom classroom time, that maybe it doesn't have to be so intensive, that 50, 90, whatever number of minutes it is each one, so.
Right. The expectation would still be very similar, but it could be something that for students like that, they could communicate with, that were having trouble with headaches or things, that would have the potential to call the school and talk with one of the admin, or call a school nurse, or go to their, you know, physician, and we'd have a little more flexibility in that, maybe. But that would be on a case-by-case basis.
Oh, absolutely, and that's what I tried to explain to the parents as well. While we're talking about this and the gating with our extracurricular activities and sports, they're still supposed to be socially distancing that six feet when they're running, are they not?
That, or in cohort, or in mask. And so naturally, in a competitive, open, depending on what they're doing in practice, that may not always be the case.
So running.
Running. So like cross-country, if they're running for time, or they're running, you know, certain areas to improve, like-
Well, I'm just thinking 10 kids, two feet apart in this little massive group going, and another group of three, two feet apart, wasn't, you know, and I would never suggest mask with kids trying to run, you know, three miles, six miles, or whatever. But it just seemed a little close in trying to make sure some of that distance was there.
And our coaches-
I know they like to pace themselves too, but, you know, the coaches don't predominantly, they usually are in front, or in back, or in the middle. They're not like with each, what I call, little track back. So it's just, I was a little curious of that one. I noticed that when I came home today.
The 30th, the sunset's going to be 7:03. Is it going to give us enough time to see everything?
It won't be like the, the high school entryway will be lit up. Naturally, all the light in the middle school will have it. There are construction lights at Lawson. It lights up, I mean, it won't be unsafe in any way, shape, or form, but we have some skylights in there. If we can get there prior to, I figured that in order to set the meeting to where it's beneficial to the public- Prior to, I figured that in order to set the meeting to where it's beneficial to the public that would be want to come and listen to the discussion, it would be hard to set the tour first because I don't know how long each one of those will take where we can do the, we could do the meeting. And however long that takes, we can adjust as a board on the backside because the, the public wouldn't be able to go on the tour per se.
Dr. Roth, you know, part of what we're doing with this is to, when the kids are in school is to determine if the procedures and protocols that we're measuring are being successful in keeping kids healthy and in school. Do you think by the 30th, when they have that meeting, that we would be able to review the absences based on illness, both in staff and in the, you know, with the kids and just compare it to last year? I mean, you know, are we seeing larger, smaller, you know? Basically, are we on track just like we were the year and the year before? Or is there a problem? I don't think there is, but I mean, it would be kind of proof of the pudding, if you will.
100% can have that.
And remember, under all the HIPAA restrictions, we won't know unless we get told that, you know, Johnny or Susie has COVID or flu or, you know, allergies that day.
Right, but it'll be a medical excuse to absence though. It's kind of, I'm like, we're not looking for specifics as much as trends. And I, I think the trend's still good, but it, it would answer a lot of questions that people are asking and were saying, well, kids, you know, will be after Labor Day. You think that gives us enough time to kind of see what the trend is after Labor Day, et cetera?
I agree. Yep, we can have that. And one of the things each of the principals highlighted today as, as a positive had nothing to do with absenteeism, but it had to do with discipline. They said all of the discipline referrals and issues with discipline are way down compared to previous years. And so again, that's, I think that shows the importance to our, of our students that want to be in school and, and taking the time and the effort to be there on a regular basis. So that was, that was a positive. But we definitely can get the information on the absenteeism to you in a form similar to what you're seeing with the enrollment there.
Okay, since you mentioned the enrollment, let me ask the questions on AIDS, especially it, you know, since my wife was a kindergarten teacher, 23 kids. It, David Brewer and Henry Levinworth, are there AIDS for that thing, for those classrooms?
Yes, they are. And right now, the 23 really isn't on a daily basis. It's on a, almost a 50%. Not quite every day does each class have 50% one day or the other, but it's fairly close. In the past, we've, our kindergarten classes, some of our kindergarten classes definitely have ranged anywhere from 20 to 25.
And that also, how are we doing on getting subs for the school year?
Amy Jo and Miranda have done a great job covering classes up to this time. Last Thursday, when they did a sub report, we had 100% fill rate to all of our absences from our teachers. And, you know, I think our processes that they have in place and the communication that they've had with our subs have been, has, has been a true benefit to us.
Anybody else have questions? I don't want to monopolize it.
Well, this is kind of like thinking way off in the future, but, you know, COVID's not going to go away. The next pandemic's not going to stop because we say it's got to stop. Are we ever even in the pit, in, in the position to sit here and think that actually we have to expand our schools so either the classrooms are larger or we have twice the number of classrooms so we still can maintain socially distance and allow our kids to go to school? I mean, that would mean twice the building space of what we have right now.
So not necessarily twice. It's reutilizing some of the spaces that we currently have, which we're doing. And Matt and his crew have worked with our building principals to identify some of those spaces. Once you get the Lawson back up and going next fall, that adds a whole nother building and it clears out the potential for several classrooms per building that would be open.
Additional space, right.
So once we get Lawson back online, I think our space issues, dealing with what we're currently dealing with, would open up a lot to be able to do what you're talking about on a regular basis.
And I think maybe where the lower grades probably will all even itself out and we can manage to allow all the children to go 100% of the time with social distance or whatever any incidents may require. I think it would be the high school itself that we're missing the space.
So at the high school level, the state would have to make some adjustments in their requirements, which I think if this continues a long period of time, that, that we would have to do some virtual electives and start using gym space and shop space and some of that to give, because there's a lot of square footage within each of those.
Right.
But there's still requirements to fulfill those on a regular basis as well. And so once, you know, all of this gets really adjusting and continually pivoting and, and seeing new things, I truly don't believe Leavenworth will ever have to add new buildings. I believe what they're, what we'd always have to do is continue the high, the high pride in our maintain, the maintenance and maintaining these buildings. But structurally and space wise, we can do a lot once we get Lawson back online.
Okay, and that, that's excellent. So then on, are we, any of our students utilizing the Pioneer Center right now? Or are they not teaching in class right now?
We do have students that are going and they actually began a week before we did. They began on the 17th.
And should we ever need any extra space to where an additional class could be put over there? Would that be acceptable with them? Or it's just, just something to think about because we don't know what's going to happen.
Right, right now, they have about 95% of that building in use.
Okay. And I've been through there. I, I know it's a busy little center.
If, if need be, we would look at some MOUs with some of our churches possibly, possibly some open buildings downtown. But you have a lot of requirements. You have a lot of ADA things.
Right.
You have a lot of things, processes to go through, which if we get to that, other districts have started kind of facilitating some of that.
Right, they're looking forward.
Right. And so as that happens, though, you'll start seeing more policies and things come to be to, to boards across the state to look at adopting, to be able to give more flexibility with doing some of those things.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are we having any luck working with Spectrum to increase wideband?
Brian Herd has beat down the doors of many, many providers. We're working on what would be a very favorable contract. It would not be with Spectrum currently because our, their offering is much different than what this would be. The only issue with the contract that we're working on with a certain provider would not begin until November, which is not the most ideal timeframe. But once we get this in place, this will happen. We can continue to tap into this long after the pandemic opens up a little bit. Not that it goes away, but opens the flexibility where we have more stat, or more people on site. We still, if we are able to finish this negotiations, which Brian does a great job with us, I'm, I have no doubt we will and it'll be beneficial to our district, that we will be able to provide opportunities for kids for multiple years out.
Because when you're reading the parent comments, the, one of the things that keeps coming up is I don't have, you know, broadband availabill, if the.
Availability.
Available, yeah, easy for you to say. And that's a problem when we're trying to do so much stuff online with Zoom, et cetera. That takes a lot of bandwidth.
So one of the things that we've done, because we did, like you read our parent comments, one of the things that our tech team has done recently, they've opened up our internet capability at our buildings to reach parts of our parking lots to where families can come and actually work in our parking lot if they need to. We are working on some wiring currently and buying some extended antennas to open up a wider area for, for that connectivity. And now I know that's not ideal and it can't be done in, in the seclusion of their home or whatever, but we are trying to solve some of those issues as quickly and be as responsive as we can. Our tech team has opened up tech tickets. So if you're a family that's having trouble, please get on our website or, or call the tech department. They do have a tech ticket and they're trying to respond to those very quickly. Because the one thing that we know that's going to happen is that there was going to be some technology frustration. But we don't want that frustration to be from our end. And we want to open those lines of communication as quickly and as efficiently as we can. And so those new antennas that actually extend and strengthen our parking lots will be installed in the next two weeks. And the open, they're able to get to our parking lot, get onto our website with their LV Pioneers account right now. And it's pretty open throughout the parking lot, but there would be some areas. So they may have to fish around, but we'll get the map of exactly where they're at up on our website as well to where they can, can see that currently. But we are trying to be responsive to those families that are having some difficulty with the technology.
Do we know kind of where they're, as you said, looking at the map, do we kind of have a general idea of where the biggest void is located? You know, in the, in the families that we really need to address with connectivity?
Not, there's not like a specific geographical area in the community. It's kind of in some of the pockets on the outskirts, I will say. The, I mean, that's, I mean, we do have some identification. We have, like, our principals are identifying specific students that need that. And they're trying to work plans out on a building level as well as what we're trying to do on a district level. But I won't tell you that it's all in the northeast quadrant or all in the southwest quadrant. It's pretty sporadic throughout town. It's some areas that we kind of knew that possibly could be struggling with some connectivity. One of the things for this quadrant, naturally Lawson does not have internet, but we're opening up the internet from this office so they could use the central office parking lot for connectivity for the northeast part of town. So we're trying to give quadrants to the families.
That was kind of the question I was wondering, kind of in the northeast with Lawson being closed. But that, that answered my question, thank you.
Well, that's a, a workaround solution for a while, but I'm glad the one November looks like a good date to possibly, you know, have a contract available to assist the process because come November, I don't want to be sitting in a car trying to do homework online in a parking lot. It's, this is Kansas, it gets cold.
100%.
Anything else questioned by other board members? If not, moving on to item seven, which is an executive session for matters affecting a student.
Mr. President, I move we're going to executive session to discuss matters affecting a student pursuant to the exception related to actions adversely or favorably accepting, affecting a student under coma and that we return to open session in this room at, I can't math, five minutes. So 6:50. The board would like to invite Dr. Roth, Dr. Rettleberger, Amy Sloan and Robert Hingala.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Wells and a second by Mrs. Murphy. All those in favor? Six zero. So those people that aren't in.
Seven zero.
Seven zero, I'm sorry. I got used, Mike, you not being here, I apologize. I can't add, you know, reading is fundamental, but my math is even worse.
You get stuck in traffic around the state.
All right, moving on to agenda item nine, executive session, action items.
Mr. President, I would like to approve, make a motion that we approve the action items as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Wells and a second by Mrs. Murphy. Any other discussion? I would add one. Miranda, we will miss you.
Thank you.
So after that, everybody in favor of approving the staffing report, raise a hand. Seven zero. Okay, community information is agenda item number 10. You've got Leavenworth City Commission, three of their meetings, the 11th of August, the 25th of August and the 1st of September. And Leavenworth County Commission for the August of this year. Upcoming main dates, we have a special, new special session on the 30th of September. Meeting here at 5:30 to add to that list. This brings up the question of Veterans Day and does anybody know about the parade?
They've not made a decision yet.
Haven't made a decision yet.
The discussion that I had heard on it is that they're trying to maintain the parade with less entries. So some of, some of the supports, like from the school, for example, not all the band may, they're going to try to shrink those down. If they can do that and accommodate, I think the parade will go on. But there, I think this last year, they had like 220 entries. They're trying to get it down to 100. But nothing's official on that, to my knowledge.
That will be very hard. All right. Any unscheduled patron input? Nope. Board member, member comments. Mr. Powell.
I just want to thank all the teachers and the staff. You know, this is a, can be a very challenging and fearful time. And they, I think exhibited great courage to stand up and say, our kids are that important and came back to school and are face to face, you know, still educating our, our kids. And some of the teachers I talked to, they really were excited to come back. They just couldn't wait to see the kids. And I think that says so much about our teachers and our administrative staff and all. And I just couldn't be more proud of them. I mean, this is, it's, again, we, we sometimes forget, this is a worldwide pandemic and they've stepped up and, you know, what an awesome thing.
Thank you. Mrs. Murphy.
I, I too want to echo the thanking our teachers. I know they're jumping through hoops and all kinds of obstacles with this. And I do beg our community and the kids and the parents and the babysitters to please grant those teachers your patience and grace. On that same return, I want to ask the teachers to give that same patience and grace to the, to the parents and the students and the babysitters. Not all parents and not all babysitters know how to log these kids in or help them get that five minute to the next class and still a potty break and take care of five other kids. So this is a huge learning curve and adaptability curve. And I know how strong and wonderful everyone is within the district and I appreciate you all. It's just, I know it's just taking a lot of prayer and patience with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Price.
I have a heartfelt thank you to all of the staff and faculty for making the hybrid and remote models work. I know they're not flawless, but they are working relatively well. So I know it took a lot of effort and I know it takes a lot of effort to make it continue to work. And I know we still have some gaps, but I know we're getting there. So, thank you.
Mr. Goodman.
I'd like to, to echo that. I'm happy to see that the, the staff and the parents and, and the students are all showing a very high degree of flexibility in, in everything that's been going on. Mostly, we've seen agreement with. Mostly, we've seen agreement with the course of action. And the course of actions have generally been reasonable and, and well thought out. And I appreciate that from, from Dr. Roth and, and his staff and all the teachers and all the parents and especially all the students, them being our, our real customers here, that we've been able to accomplish what we've been able to accomplish despite what's going on in the world. So, just want to extend a general good job to everybody involved. Keeping controversy and, and problems and drama to an absolute minimum has been, has been very heartening. So.
Thank you. Mr. Kearney.
I, I want to make a comment. I guess I should have spoke up when we were doing the thing about the evaluation. Do you mind if I say something?
Not at all.
Great. I just, I think we're, we're going a little too far with, with the performance evaluation. If you've got somebody new to the district or new to the superintendentship, you probably want to have a, a more involved evaluation. But Dr. Roth's been here now five years. You've got, what, seventeen years as superintendent, somewhere in that?
I've been here, this is my seventh.
I thought it was. I, I remember when you were sitting right there.
Lucky number seven.
But anyway, I, I just, I just think we can, to me, it should be a pretty simplistic process. I don't, I don't want to, I mean, I know Danielle said that we gotta earn our keep and I think we do. Because you can tell that, by the way, nobody ever wants to run for board. But again, I just, I just don't want to get to where we're really, really overly involved in somebody we know. I mean, I think everybody knows Dr. Roth's strengths and weaknesses by now that have been on the board a while. To the new people, it may be more valuable, but I just, that's just. And then, I get two other thoughts. We are doing great things in the district, but I, I got one little concern and that's because I'm more involved now uber, uber-wise since I have a son-in-law who's been in intensive care for three weeks. So, I think we're, we're missing some communication between some of the office staff at the schools and the principal or however that, that word is getting around. Because I got some really bogus information one day and I, I was kind of embarrassed. And especially when this lady, I don't know who she is, she said, well, you're a board member. You're supposed to know everything. And I said, no, that, that's not how it works. But anyway, we, we worked it out, but it was just, if it was somebody else, I could see him being really upset. I just, I just thought I was a little bit dumb not, I mean, when she told me I just had to drive up and I was okay because I didn't know the routine about the card and the number and all that. So, I, I just think we gotta, the communication's gotta go all the way down on our protocol. And with that, are we still, I mistakenly called Lawson? And the phone gives the, the little message, there'll be somebody with you any minute. So, do we need to take that offline or somebody gonna be with them any minute up there?
That's a Brian question. I have no idea.
No, I, I know, I know that, but I think we ought to change the, somebody be with you in just a minute.
We'll be with you next year.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody miss you, yeah, next spring.
Your call is very important to us.
Yeah, anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Wells.
So, I would also like to echo what everyone's said about our, amazing our staff is, this is not easy. Lots and, lots and lots of things are happening back and forth between our parents and our students and our staff. And I, I just hope that everybody maintains productive, positive lines of communication. Because no matter whether we're face-to-face or we're Zooming or we're emailing or we're talking on the phone, it's important that we maintain those relationships all the way around. And so, I, I have faith that we can if we just be mindful that we are all human and we need each other to survive. Mrs. Murphy earlier mentioned the backpacks that were there. I just wanted to name them. The Churches United for Our Youth donated three hundred and seventeen filled backpacks for our students. Thank you so much. We appreciate the effort that you guys have put in. We know it takes a lot of man-hours to gather those supplies and pack those packs and take them to our schools and they, they will be used and they are appreciated and thank you very much. If anybody has a hookup for helping with your neighbor, if you see that your neighbors have school-age kids and you guys have Wi-Fi and you have a great thing, offer them your Wi-Fi passcode. I know, I'm not asking you to open it up for everybody, but just make sure that those kids in your neighborhood have access. Band together. Make your own little hotspot for them if you possibly can. I've got three groups of neighbors on mine. We're, we're gonna be okay. Help each other out until everybody can get access. Thank you. Be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. And I'd like to just go ahead and ditto what everybody has said. And for the administrators, just remember that information flow is key because you have order, counter-order disorder. And when you change things around, word doesn't get down all the time. And, you know, be helpful to those people who are totally clueless about technology, which I approach that subject quite a bit, especially since I'm retired now and don't have to deal with it on a daily basis. And along with you showing grace, I'm glad that our teachers are showing grace. I'm glad that our students are and I'm glad that our parents are because we all got, we're all in this together and we've got to accept that we're all trying to do what's right and what's good for the kids. It's just something that hasn't happened in a hundred years. And we're making things up and we couldn't have done this a hundred years ago. Any alibis? Seeing none? Or adjourned?